Welcome everyone to this meeting in the Dunedin City Council. And our opening prayer today will be led by Lux and Harish from the Dunedin Hindu Community. Welcome, thank you.
Good day to everyone. I just want everyone to just close your eyes and feel the sound because it's going to be our language basically. And then we'll explain to you what was exactly the prayers all about. Hereby, we normally pray to the nature, she is in the form of a woman because normally in our culture we respect women a lot. And she is in the form of a goddess and she blesses in the form of a nature and helps every time to come out of good wealth, health and prosperity for the people. So that's what the entire meaning of this Sanskrit slogan. And then I wish your 10-year plan of agenda to be highly successful. And thanks for the opportunity you have given for the Hindu Temple Society people to be here and bless this agenda as well as they even to be highly successful. Thank you.
Now councillors, there is no public forum today. I just want to acknowledge though the representatives from the Audit Office, Julian Tan and Amanda Nichols are with us today. Onto apologies, we have apologies from councillors Laufeysoe and Newell. And possible apology from myself for early departure. I have a speaking engagement with the Minister for Climate Change, it's just after five. So if we're not finished by then, I shall be attending that and Deputy Mayor Staines will take over in the chair. But I'll move that we accept those apologies, seconded councillor Staines, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. I'll move item four, confirmation of the agenda, I'll move that the council confirms the public part of the agenda with the following alteration in regard to standing order 2.1 option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments. Seconded councillor Staines, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Declarations of interest, item five, I'll move that council notes the elected members' interest register, attachment A, and confirms the proposed management plan for elected members' interests. And further note the executive leadership team's interest register. Seconded councillor Staines, there's no alterations to the register of interests, I take it? All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Onto item six, ordinary council meeting minutes. I'll move that the council confirms the public part of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on 29th of May 2018 as a correct record. Seconded councillor Staines, any discussion? Put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Onto the minutes of committees, councillor Wilson, Infrastructure Services and Network Committee.
Thank you worship, I'll move please that the council notes the minutes of the Infrastructure Services and Networks Committee meeting held on 11th of June 2018.
Seconded councillor O'Malley, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item eight, Community and Culture Committee, councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you worship and apologies to you and colleagues for my less than formal presentation this afternoon. I'm meeting attire, having a grand old time presently at San Francisco Airport. But I'd like to move that the council note the minutes of the Community and Culture Meeting held on the 12th of June 2018.
Seconded councillor Elder, any discussion? Put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item nine, Planning and Environment Committee, councillor Benson-Patt.
Thank you worship, I'll move that the council note the minutes of the meeting of the Planning and Environment Committee of 22nd June, was it?
Yes, 12th.
12th of June, thank you.
Seconded councillor Hall, discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Now, we have the Community Board minutes and... I think I'm not reliable.
I'm happy to move minutes of the Community Boards, items 10 through 15, that they be notes the minutes of the Community Boards.
Seconded councillor Elder, any discussion on any of those? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Okay, that leads us on to... Item 16, adoption of the 10-year plan. And I think Mr Tan is here as well. And Ms Nichols. Welcome Dave. We'll start off, Terence, do you wish to speak to this prior to questions or prior to any other commentary?
Okay, so yeah, thank you, afternoon off. Yeah, just to recap the process we've all gone through. So the draft community plan, long-term plan apologies, was released back in February, March. Public consultation has resulted in the plan that we have before us today. I think you've all got a copy of the large plan. If you like, the main outcomes from the public consultation are summarised on pages 11, 12 and 13 of what you have in front of you. And that's where, so the main outcomes of the consultation and the key features of the long-term plan. Happy to take questions about any of that, all the process.
Okay, well before we do, I'd like to give Mr Tan the opportunity to speak to his opinion if you wish to, or we can go straight into questions. So councillors, if you have any questions either of Mr Terence or Mr Tan and Ms Nichol, any questions? Councillor Van Dusen.
Thank you for your auditor's report, Mr Tan. My first question is why we couldn't get it a little bit earlier to give us a good chance to compare what you have to say with what's in our 10-year plan? We've had less than a day to look at your opinion.
We would like to have given you a lot earlier, but there's a pretty tight process we had to go through, including receiving the copy that you have before you, the long-term plan. And with that, we submitted in response to the Auditor General's hot review questions. So for your benefit, worked through the weekend. So we got the Auditor General's office clearance at about quarter past five yesterday. So you have that audit report today in your hot little hands, it's as good as we can get.
Right, my hope is that given that this information's been around for months, that we might actually get a couple of days to look over it in the future. But I'll carry on with questions. Do you accept that the large-scale deferred maintenance that we have had in certainly the companies and in some areas of the DCC is another way of actually acquiring debt?
That's a question for management. What we look at are the sets of assumptions that you've used following the consultation process and you've processed those. They have then been embedded into your final LTP. So I'm not in a position to comment on whether that's the right thing to do, that's for council.
But in terms of debt, another question, do you accept that finally rate payers are responsible not just for council debt, but also for the debts of the companies?
That's not a question that's appropriate at this point. We're talking about the council long-term plan, not the companies. So restrict your questions to what we're here to do.
I'm referring, your worship, to page 29. Page 29, background. What it says is that under scheduled term and local government act, that it specifies minimum information and content that must be included in their 10-year plan, including council-controlled organisations. Now, given that we're talking about the 10-year plan and given that the scheduled term of the LGA specifies that council-controlled organisations must be included in the 10-year plan, may I please finally address the 10-year plan?
You can address the 10-year plan, the council part of it, okay? I've already told you what you can do.
Why is it that I cannot address what is on our audit paper on page 29?
I'm not arguing about it, direct your questions as you will to the 10-year, on the 10-year plan.
This is the 10-year plan and an item, on page 29, it specifies council-controlled organisations.
Councillor, if you will not do as I ask, you can sit down and let someone else ask a question.
Given that we're not to get an answer on whether or not the rate payers are liable for the debt, if we look at page 30, we have...
Councillor, Mr Tan is ready to answer your question.
Thank you, if I may, for no extra charge. The information that you are looking for is in fact included in the long-term plan. You probably got to go a bit deeper, it's on pages, on my document, it's on pages 196 onwards. There's a heading, section 4.5 of the plan, of the document.
I'm very aware of what the council-controlled organisation debt is. My question was, do you believe that the rate payer is ultimately liable for it? But the mayor has directed not to answer that question, so I'll carry on. And thank you for not having an extra charge, we do appreciate that. One of my questions in fact was, how much are we getting charged for your services this time round?
It's, it's... It's going to be disclosed in the annual report, I can't just give you off my head. My formidable memory seems to fail me right now, so I'll come back to you if you want.
It may be similar to the $54,000 that we've paid in the past.
Sorry?
It may be similar to the $54,000 that we've paid in the past. It's not any particularly different is what I'm asking.
It's pretty similar, adjusted for small movement, yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Right, in your opinion, you say that your job essentially is to confirm that the 10-year plan provides a reasonable basis for the accountability of the council to community. In that reasonable basis, you talk about looking for things that are a material misstatement. When on page 30, it says, under seven, section B, debt is forecast to be 199 million. Do you consider this to be a material misstatement or not?
No, not at all. Our job really is to test the assumptions that council has adopted and see if they've been applied correctly in your financial model. So that's all we're commenting on.
So given that the previous page refers to other debts that we're not allowed to discuss and that under section 7B, there is no mention that it is only council debt, do you still consider that the statement debt is forecast to be 1.99 million to be not a misstatement?
Oh no, I think you got it wrong, I'm not quite sure what definition you're working towards. Misstatement is where, say in your case in the LTP, we're talking about forecast information, that when you apply the assumptions that's used to drive the numbers in the LTP, that there has been a stuff-up in numbers? We have not come across that, so there's no...
So in your opinion, the entire debt for the city council is only 199 million and there's no stuff-up?
Well, that's what's in your plan, yes.
That's not how I read it, but I'll carry on.
Councillor Van Dusen, we've pointed out before a number of times, the long-term plan for the council, the 10-year LTP for the council, is not permitted to cover the budgets, debt projections and so on for the companies. So this is specifically council debt. You could equally ask, hang on, you could equally ask, is the equity that Cat DCC hold in the profit generating companies that are the CCOs and you as council sign off those debt-equity ratios regularly and you're briefed about them regularly? So as you're well aware, their debt-equity ratios are in the 40-50% range, which means that between them, we've got, the value is more than twice the value of the debt. You regularly get briefing on those and what you've been told many times is that the council LTP includes nothing about the financial position of the CCOs. That's as set out in the Local Government Act. It includes the fact that we have them, but their budgets and their financial position does not make up part of the LTP.
I would have been happy, Chief Executive Bidrose, if it had said council debt. But what it says is debt, but I'll move on. Was it a material misstatement, Mr Tan, when you were in our draft meeting for the 10-year plan and the claim was made that DCHL was quote "building a cash reserve", would that have been a material misstatement in your opinion?
There are no material misstatements to speak of. If they were, we'd have included the misstatements in the letter of representation that the council signs and returns to us, the council mayor. So the misstatement that you're thinking of, I'm not quite entirely certain what it is that you're referring to.
Given that I have sat through a lot of auditor's reports by now and that none of them have ever picked up hundreds of missing cards, hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of fraudulent credit card use and hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of cash missing from, for instance, parking facilities, given that all the previous audits that we have ever had have never picked up any of what I would call material misstatements.
Councillor, you seem to be obstinately misunderstanding what we're here to talk about. This is the long-term plan and the audit opinion on it. The audit is not, and it was never intended, to cover the things that you're talking about. So can you please, for once, develop some lucidity and some understanding and ask questions on the subject that we are here to discuss?
I understand that I'm here to discuss what is in rate payers' interests and if I'm not allowed to discuss those, I will try and further limit my questions. Mr Tan, do you agree with the overview of the draft budgets statement that this 10-year plan is different from the last ones that we're allowed to discuss? As we've built a strong foundation and we are now in a position to invest, do you think this is the case? Or do you think this is a misstatement?
I'm not quite sure how often I need to repeat, there are no misstatements we're talking about here. I just got to refer to you back to the representation. If there were misstatements, then we've insisted on those being included in the representation letter signed back to us.
So you're saying that you actually agree with that statement and that it's not a misstatement?
Our job is not to agree or disagree, our job is to look at the LTP, whether the LTP as a whole is the right document for decision-making and accountability to the community. And we have given a view that it is.
Despite the fact that it says things which are plainly questionable?
Councillor, you're on very thin ice.
I apologise, I withdraw, I'll go to my next question. Local authorities are carrying out substantially less work than budgeted. Now, this is from the audit report from 2015. Local authorities are carrying out substantially less work than budgeted and will be encouraged to consider whether they are under-investing in infrastructure in particular. Given that we are now three years further down the track, do you consider that we've made any progress on the under-investing by substantial less work being done than budgeted?
We are looking at a forecast 10-year plan, councillor, we are not looking at history. So in looking at your, say your CapEx and renewal programme, we do stand back and say to ourselves, have you got the money? In other words, have you planned sufficiently to allocate money to your renewals programme? And we also stand back to say to ourselves, is there the capacity within council and within the industry to support that renewal programme over the 10 years? So it's not quite the answer that you're looking for, but that's what we're doing, we're looking at the future.
Well, this was...
Councillor, the chief executive was able to answer your question or...
Yep, I can help with that, not including this year because I haven't calculated with this year, but the previous four years of CapEx spend in this council equaled that CapEx spend for the 10 years before that. So I think you can comfortably say that that represents an improvement. It's not ideal and we're still working on it, as I've told you in emails before. We've got a couple more years of increasing the capability and capacity of both the water team and the transport team, but they are picking up the investment and as I say, the last four years CapEx spend is equal to the 10 years previous.
Mr Tan, given that we went into this election anticipating a 3% rates rise and we now have a 7.8%, and given that the local government cost index is 1.5% and we are introducing a 4% increase in fees and charges, do you believe that this provides a reasonable basis for accountability of the council to the community?
Councillor, I think that's a question you could ask yourself and your fellow councillors, I can't comment on it.
Thank you. Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you worship, a question perhaps for the chief executive, potentially anticipating discussion to come on this agenda. But what would the financial and/or legal implications be should the 10-year plan be voted down and not adopted by this meeting?
Well, we wouldn't meet any of our requirements under the Local Government Act and we wouldn't be able to strike a rate for July.
Councillor Wilson.
Just taking the question further that you recently answered for councillor Van Dusen on the ability to spend CapEx and renewals. My understanding, this 10-year plan has also got staff numbers increasing in order to do that, is that correct? And you're comfortable that there are sufficient staffing or places being provided for in the budget to allow that work to happen?
For the last four or five years, every year, we have been taking an apartment or two and pretty systematically having a look at its spend, having a look at what it is and isn't doing and looking to both increase the capacity and capability of the team and over time increase their budgets so that that deferred maintenance, which I completely concur with councillor Van Dusen, has occurred so that it can be corrected and going forward, that doesn't continue. So as you're aware, quite a chunk of the increase in budget that's in the budget for this year is about adequately funding the property department who have been deferring work and we've been spending money we required that hasn't been budgeted. So there is systematic work done to do these. This year's budget contains primarily extra staffing in that property area, that's the focus for this year. In previous years, I think a couple ago it was transport, last year it was water. Depending on some of the things going forward, there are climate change issues, there are ground drainage issues that may well mean that the water department will need some additional capacity yet. But I think it would be right to say we're in a much better position of both understanding the work, getting erasal management plans sorted as they come into place that will tell us what's needed in order to do the work. So yes, we've had, despite having held our budgets to 3% increases a year for the last three or four years, we have been systematically increasing those departments and funding that out of efficiency gains, we just can't do that forever.
Subsequent question. I've sat around this table as long as, or as many years as councillor Van Dusen, not for as long. And my concern is that we always have this debate about do we invest in the city or do we cut staff and not get the jobs done? And you can't have both, nor can you also, well, the question is actually, can you continue to have rates at 3% and invest in the renewals and CapEx at the rate that you think the city as the manager, the CEO can sustain?
Look, some of the rates increased this year is definitely because of some of the upgrades that you consulted on and made decisions about by a comfortable majority in every single case. So the town centre upgrade, the tertiary upgrade, the bridge to the new very popular harbourside development, which I think was unanimously agreed to around the council table. In addition to that, as I say, some of the rates increase is about additional people, additional operational spend in the water, in the property department, which has historically been noticeably underfunded. And you could rob Peter to pay Paul, you could make some decisions to close libraries for some days of the week or to have one less museum or to... But there is generally not a groundswell of community support to say, don't do the South Dunedin Library because that's additional spending that we are, that the libraries are working out how to pay for out of their current budgets because they haven't had much of a budget increase. That is for councillors to make their call. Are there services that you are willing to stop providing in order to pick up the slack? Walking around this building, I see a lot of people who are stretched and working very, very hard. I think we now have very few people on staff that are not hardworking and dedicated. I don't see that there are a lot of efficiency gains further to be made.
Councillor Elder.
Just a question I have, within, we've got a budget there. Right, okay, sorry about that. Is there capacity if some things have to be brought forward? Say stormwater or, say, the waste programme and the new facility for waste? Is there capacity in the budget to actually change or adapt as we go along regarding that?
It's pretty tightly prescribed by the Local Government Act. Anything of any size, it is likely that we would look to do it in next year's annual plan and have a special consultation round with the community. Modest amounts, there is capacity to do that. Very small amounts within the staffing and modest amounts to come back to this council.
Any further questions? Okay, councillor Lord, you're happy to move, is there a second, councillor Hall? These are the resolutions on the audit paper, do you wish to speak to it?
Well, I would just, I didn't plan to say a lot, but I just would say that for those that are perhaps sitting in the gallery or watching on TV that think that this is a budget that we're just agreeing on today, that we've given no thought to, what I would say is that the current city council debt is projected at the end of June to be 198 million. That is easily, when you look at the value of our properties and the value of our holdings in the Waipuri Fund, that's virtually equal to that. So it's not a considerable debt when we have a city council assets of over $3 billion. I'd also say in terms of the company's debts, I'd like to just reiterate the comments that the CEO made, that the current debt of the companies, and I'm just, I did try and find it, but I think it's a bit under 400 million, 385 million. There's probably under half, 50% or just perhaps a fraction over 50% equity in those companies. So the idea that we are... So, the idea that we as a city council would suddenly be liable for millions and millions of dollars of asset is, of debt, is unlikely to happen for a number of reasons. One, that we have a very strict treasury policy that enables debt to be projected and we have only a certain amount to come due at any one year and we have to have a certain amount 20% out beyond four years. So, I just think that this is well thought out, it has been checked by the auditors and I'd just like to thank Mr Tan and Amanda for your work. And I'd also like to thank the staff that we've got, I'm not sure if Tan is here, but she's done an awful lot of work on this, she's brought us an awful lot of briefings. Oh, sorry, I can't hear you. And I thank Mr Pinhole and just all the staff that have worked on this. And as we know, we've had a number of briefings over the last two years, so, thank you.
Ladies and speakers.
I'm sorry, please note that there are two additional recommendations in here. So, on your papers, you've got what is now AD and E, B and C are added, approving the plan itself and then receiving the auditor's report.
And, well, I'd just like to add to councillor Lord's comments. The development of this long-term plan was the most thorough and earliest actually that I've ever been involved with. It was well drafted in December, gave councillors a good amount of time to consider it. And more to the point, it was very clear to the public what we were proposing from January on. So that we had, I think, again, one of the most successful consultations that we've ever had. Certainly, the consultation document was most, the best received that we've ever put out. And as a, as a consequence, we were able to make extremely consensual decisions. Almost all of the plan went through with very considerable majorities. So, I think we've got a very robust and well-supported plan. And I would like to acknowledge the contribution of Sandy Graham, who isn't actually here today, she's off. But she, Sandy drove this through the process and put an enormous amount of it, I need to acknowledge that. Councillor Benson-Pope.
Thank you, Your Worship, I'd like to endorse those comments made earlier by a couple of members, including yourself then, about the process that's been followed here. This is an extraordinary comprehensive document, ten-year plans always are, and they always turn into a moving feast one way or another because of issues we have with delivery of contracts and so on. But I don't think anyone can reasonably doubt the breadth of the consultation that happened. And it's more and more challenging to reach out to the community because of age difference, communication difference and so on. And I think some of the elements and feedback that we've had reported in other committee contacts shows how well that was done and how, with how much initiative and innovation that was done. I think this is also important because this ten-year plan, because it not only addresses major spend in the nuts and bolts area that people have been asking for and needs to be done, but it also addresses some, I think, unique opportunities for the city right now and in this ten-year period. The largest one is probably the opportunity to unlock the waterfront. And we all know around this table that it's a rare thing for anything to be voted on unanimously. And the fact that even after the consultation with widespread support, that that held, that $20 million for the architectural bridge held is a comment on the strength of the, strength of vision of people here and also the strong support in the community. But that's not all that's happening. We have extraordinary opportunities brought to us by other people neglecting our infrastructure, our community infrastructure. And clearly, what is so far identified as a $1.4 billion build on a hospital will doubtless be more, there will be associated add-ons that will move that budget as time goes on.
Point of order.
I would have expected, Your Worship, after your berating me for talking about the ten-year plan, that you would shut down councillor Benson-Pope about the hospital. Is it appropriate for councillor Benson-Pope to take our time up with his brand standing on the-
Yes, it is, I define the term.
Councillor Benson-Pope.
And as government commits to a very sensible decision to conduct that build in the heart of our city and support the city by doing so, the 3,000-plus workforce is better located in the centre of town than elsewhere, as we would all agree. The council in this budget alongside that has budgeted $60 million for the long overdue upgrade of George Street and a further $20 million for significant urban design upgrades around the campus. It's been my view, and I've said this in discussions about this plan previous to this, that we make a lot of town and gown relationships, but we are finally delivering on them properly with this sort of investment in the campus. It's also, of course, investment that links brilliantly with the central city work, the hospital work that councillor would like me not to refer to, and also the pathways to the stadium, which has shown its success in recent times and last weekend in particular. So, I think this is a very sound document that's also got a substantial amount of vision that will take our city well and strongly into the future.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Your Worship, I just wanted to talk about some other matters and concur in thanks to the staff. And I, some of us see the poor staff members having to troll through in November and October to do budget rounds and every, every member of the staff, I think, are affected by that. And as they go in to try and see what they can and cannot put in, and that process is one that I think every, as I said, touches every part of the council and the work that goes in behind it. This is a very long process and I think that they will be equally happy to see themselves being able to get back to work as usual after this ten-year plan. This has been to a certain extent a plan that has been dominated by the big projects and I understand why, and it's very, very nice to see us having some big plans in there. But I, for me, that isn't what is going to be, I will necessarily remember this plan for. And I think, I would hate us to leave today only mentioning the matters that councillor Benson-Pope has just spoken about. I think the 65, sorry, $35 million invested in South Dunedin to look at climate change is great. I don't think anyone was against it and I think it says something that it isn't a highlight actually and hasn't been picked up and talked about greatly. The place-based, the investment in place-based workers, I think is really, really exciting. The money for the migrant funding, funding that Marie LaFesso put in there and supported so well by the council. And the small changes that the mayor brought in with the building consent, getting rid of the red tape for people insulating houses. Those are significant things that will make a real difference to members of our community individually, much more than some of the big projects. And I'm really proud that we've managed to do a whole lot of big things, but those small things that will make a difference and that will touch a lot of lives. So, congratulations to the staff and to the councillors around the table who've been active, proactively putting things in there, putting resolutions up and having that debate in a really constructive way and congratulations to the team.
Councillor Vandevos.
My view is that the 7.8% rates increase that is proposed is insupportable. That the staff increase costs, which have been escalating constantly all the time I've been a councillor, even when staff numbers reduced, is insupportable and unsustainable. I believe that it's insupportable to raise fees and charges by 4% when the local government cost index, which specifies what the real increase should be, is only 1.5%. We are more than doubling fees and charges over and above what is supportable. We are more than doubling rates over and above what we said going into the election we were going to do. How do we justify $4 million for the Hydra slide? It's a, it's a plastic tube. How do we justify so many things in this plan which plainly, for anyone who's worked in the business world, are completely and utterly out of whack with what they should really cost? How do we justify in the property department having a 95% increase in personnel costs and getting 13 new FTEs into property? When the claim in the ten-year plan is that we're putting extra staff resources into infrastructure, drainage, that kind of thing. We're not, we're putting them into property. And I believe inappropriately, property has bumbled along without these 13 extra staff for a very long time now, I don't see any particular advantage in the way they're doing it now. Councillor Benson-Pope has just said that this ten-year plan is, and I quote, "an extraordinarily comprehensive document." Mayor Kahl has just said, "It was very clear to the public what we were proposing in the ten-year plan." Councillor Benson-Pope makes reference to the $60 million long overdue upgrade of George Street. The fact is that during consultation, it emerged that the mayor thought that $60 million included all the underground infrastructure, electrical, drainage and sewage. So, not only was it not clear to the public, it wasn't clear to the mayor and I suspect a number of other people around this table, what exactly is this $60 million being spent in George Street for? Nobody knows. And yet, despite it going through a draft plan, despite the complete misunderstanding of what the $60 million is for, the $60 million has stayed in there stubbornly. The gold-plated option is basically the only detail that we've got that anybody can put their finger on. We're going to get a gold-plated something in George Street and it's going to cost ratepayers $60 million. To me, none of this makes any sense at all. To me, for an auditor to sign off on this kind of rampant increase in costs, on increases in fees and charges, on massive unprecedented increase in debt, not only did we plan to put it up $85 million in the plan, but at the last minute, we stuck another $65 million on it because we decided that perhaps it wasn't wise to arbitrarily get rid of all the northern properties after all. $150 million worth of new debt, massively increased rates and for what? Deferred maintenance perhaps, certainly there's a fair amount of that. The admission that deferred maintenance is simply a way of disguising debt, is simply another kind of debt, is an admission I have not yet been able to get from any council staff. And until we do, we are going to continue to see deferred maintenance as a way of messaging debt figures. The real problem that I see is that we have no real comeback in terms of doing anything about a draft ten-year plan. It comes to us as a fait accompli, it leaves us pretty much the same way. I'm proud to be possibly the only councillor that will vote against, again, for consistency, this ten-year plan.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I just reiterate what I heard Mr Tan say a few moments ago, that this is the right document for decision-making and accountability for this council. And on that basis, I want to make a couple of points. First of all, that it was a very accessible document for our community. And as I went out and was engaged with members of the community, I noted that considerably. I've been involved from the other side of things, from a community board perspective, a grassroots perspective for nine years on several long-term plans and many annual plans. And I would have to say that this one really topped them all in terms of accessibility. It was something in it for everybody and it touched all parts of our community in my view. I want to acknowledge the staff for the way that they very creatively thought about how we might engage the community to get them excited and find out their views about the vision for the city. And to know that sometimes in the community, people think because we put out a particular option that that means we have already made a decision, that is far from the truth. And I know it took me a little time to understand that when I was working from the other side of things on the community board and often people would say that. But we know that we have to consult on something and we certainly made it very clear about the options we were consulting on and that no was an option and we had that discussion with you, Mr Tan, the last time you came forward. The other comment I want to make is that this is a pivotal time for our city. Thanks to previous councils and the belt tightening and austerity, we're in a position to look forward. Being part of considering this vision has been a privilege for me as a first-time city councillor. And I believe that my colleagues around this table have very carefully considered this vision and what the commission has said about it to us, that my colleagues around this table have approached it very responsibly, have engaged in robust debate and listened to different opinions around the table and have come to a conclusion that was seen before us today. And above all, for me, people have been at the heart of this decision-making, what kind of city we want in 10 years' time for our community, for our people. And I'm very proud to be supporting this today and to see this signed off, I hope.
Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, excuse me, thank you, Your Worship, I wasn't going to speak to this. I think the points have been well made around the process and the outcomes and I echo the thanks of staff who've led what is a particularly exhaustive and all-consuming process in setting the ten-year plan for our budgets. But I feel like I need to respond to a couple of points made by councillor Vandevos, who has said on a couple of occasions at this meeting that we put forward a proposal ahead of the election, which is an extraordinary Freudian slip. Most of us approach the setting of ten-year budgets with our community's collective ambition and aspiration in mind, more so than our own political ambition and aspiration. But unfortunately, that doesn't appear to be universally the case.
I was referring to the mayor's publicity for the elections.
Indeed.
You just had a conversation with him, he would feel like-
Whatever that meant. But I, but I feel more importantly than that, I think, we've heard and we would all agree from councillor Vandevos that our job is here to represent the best interests of the ratepayers. But to stand here and say that both this plan and its contents are insupportable and to suggest voting against it and to propose that others join him in voting against it, I can't see how the best interests of anyone in this community is served by us stopping, being able to strike rates from the 1st of July, at which point the income for this council to go about its daily business would dissipate. That would be a grossly irresponsible thing to do, to vote down the ten-year plan, almost as if that isn't necessarily even the intended outcome. The intended outcome is to be the, well, you know, the white knight and the flashing, the flashpoint for civic disaffection rather than doing what we are charged to do and making responsible decisions for the city to be able to go about its business. And again, to the point around the central city upgrade saying the same thing repeatedly doesn't make it any more true. The capital budget is a fund that we have set aside from which we will invest in our central city above-ground amenity as the design is refined and evolves through a process that has been going for some time up until this point and will continue as that work, as the years that we have allocated that work to, to take place draw nearer. as the years that we have allocated that work to, to take place draw nearer. So that is something that I certainly was clear about as we went through this process. Most people around this table certainly were and to the extent we got feedback on those items, our community were and were largely very supportive of. So I hope that gives people comfort. I think we do have, I think we made progress in terms of putting together a consultation methodology, if you like, that was more accessible. There's still certainly work to do in that regard and I look forward to building on the advances that we've made as we put together our public consultation process for the annual plan, as much as staff I'm sure are keen to start working that immediately after just finishing off our ten-year plan process. But in the next six to nine months, as we go and have further conversations around our community aspirations and how we can collectively deliver on them. Thank you.
I must say that Dunedin is actually at the moment being seen as a very dynamic, go-ahead city. We had Ed Sheeran concert at Easter time and the weather was good so everybody could get out and about. The hospital rebuild is going to contribute a huge amount to our city. The waterfront vision which Ian Taylor and Van Brandenburg put before us before this ten-year consultation certainly excited a lot of people. So there is a lot of exciting opportunities in the space right now in Dunedin, which we haven't had for a long time. So it looks like the harbour front and the harbour cycle wave will be, is progressing well. And I think all in all, this plan, looking at the upgrade of the tertiary precinct and centre city and a lot of this work being done in culture and in arts is going to make this city a very, very attractive city for people to come to, to visit, to study and to play. One of the things that I was looking at in this plan is that there are a lot of costs that aren't, there's a lot of subsidies that we can actually go for. So say the twenty million or the sixty million upgrades, there's NZTA funding that we can apply for, so that's not the full cost. There will be funding for those things and there will be, there could be contribution through targeted rates as well. So it doesn't reflect that the subsidies that we can and will be applying for. And also there is the rates rebate scheme. So people have got the opportunity, if it's too hard, to apply for the rates rebate scheme. And I would love for everybody to know that because in fact, if they are facing hardships, that is a fund that's available to them. So I think this is an exciting time. We've just completed the Gig City rollout. There's every reason for people to come here and set up a business here, to live here and to visit here. And I think it's exciting future for us to plan together as a city, as a whole city. Thank you.
so, morning.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, your worship. Touching on a similar theme to councillor Elder, I think the key thing that I looked at was when I was first elected. And if you hadn't said I wouldn't be standing here supporting a rate increase of seven point eight five percent, seven point eight four, seven point eight five percent, I would have really struggled with that. Yeah, you know what, you're right, as we should. But the real thing that I've looked at, and I've gone through this over, as we all have, is what's the outcome? What's the outcome for all our community? What's the outcome for our city? What's the outcome for Dunedin? I don't think we've had a period in our city in the last hundred, hundred-plus years that we're going to have in the next ten years. The growth, the vibe, the community spirit, it is really all boiling up right here. And that's the part we have to harness, that's the part we have to capture and we have to create a vision. This plan actually creates a vision that ninety-eight percent of the community can buy into. And to me, that's the most important part. I don't believe we've left anybody in the community behind on this plan. We've reached every corner, we've reached everybody across, whether they're rich or whether they're poor. Everybody in our community is going to be benefits of this plan. But the other part is we're also maximizing what we can get from government, NZTA and others. And that to me is also a real factor. So we've got community investment, we've got co-investment, we've got community outcomes and quality of life. What I'm excited about seeing what actually looks like in twenty twenty-eight and the path to get there. And I really want to thank, as many of you already have, the community for actually sharing their thoughts and ideas with us and their opinions, but also the staff that have gone through this and spent many, many hours on it. But I think this is a plan that I think everybody in the community can really hold up and look at and at a point, take pride in, because there's a lot of great data. Unfortunately, very few people are going to read it. That's the outcome of it. But the data is right there for anybody who wants to look at and see why we've made this decision. And to me, that's the important part, we're making the right decision for our city and bring on twenty twenty-eight.
the speakers. councillor Lord, your right of reply.
I'd just like to just comment on a few things that councillor Vandivers has referred to. He said that this is an insupportable plan because of the rates rise at seven point eight percent. I would make the comment that the rates rise this year is driven predominantly by operational expenditure. And that is not a bridge, that is not a centre city upgrade, but by doing jobs that we should have been doing or perhaps are doing better, might be a better way of phrasing it. So that when we were very happy to complain about the mud tanks not being cleaned in two thousand and fourteen after the flood, now we know that's being done and it comes at a cost. There's a number of other things, I think of residents in Mozgill that have had their houses flooded out. They get the more rebuilt, they get the jib put in, they put the carpets back in and then within a few days after them get moving back into their homes, they get flooded out again. It impresses me and it pleases me that we've got people working in our water department under Tom Dyer who are planning new pump stations which are starting to be built now and will be operational by the end of this year that will make a significant difference for those people. You talked about the property department, you said it's bumbled along in the past quite happily. Well, I'll be quite honest with you, I don't want to be a part of a council that's got a property department that's bumbling along. And if thirteen new staff mean that we get properties with warrant of fitnesses and that we comply and that we work on things, well, I'm happy to support that. I want good process here. You said nobody knows what we get for our square meter rate. You said sixty million dollar upgrade and nobody knows. Well, I'm not sure if you didn't sit through the workshops with Philippe, but I sat through workshops, it doesn't matter if she's gone or not, I sat through, I sat through workshops where we had the stuff in front of us. We had pictures, we said this is what a per square meter rate looks like, that would cost you sixty million. This will be what you'd get if you spent forty million. This will be what you'd get if you spent twenty million. If you talk nicely to councillor Hall, he might cut your manuka and we can go back to the eighteen eighties, but I don't think we want to do that. You also talked about the motion that councillor Hawkins made about increasing the debt. Yes, we have increased debt, but we've taken out the property sales. Now, those properties, if like every other property in the country, probably double in value about every ten years, like our houses do, like our businesses do. And so at the end of twenty twenty-eight, those properties will be worth significantly more than the money we've borrowed for debt. And with a bit of luck, with a property department that's not bumbling along, they might actually be returning us profits considerably higher than the rate of interest. So I'm happy to support this plan and I hope you all do too.
I think we'll put this by division, please. Can we have the items voted on separately? Well, the last one separately. Thank you. Just the last one you want.
I'm happy to vote for the last one, just none of the others. I'd like that option, if possible.
Okay. So in the first instance, the division is on the, I can't, A to D.
councillor Benson Pope.
Aye.
councillor Elder.
Aye.
councillor Gary.
Aye.
councillor Hall.
Aye.
councillor Hawkins.
Aye.
councillor Lord.
Aye.
councillor O'Malley.
Aye.
councillor Staines.
Aye.
councillor Stedman.
Aye.
councillor Vandivers.
No.
councillor Wiley.
Yes.
councillor Wilson.
Yes.
your worship.
Aye.
carried twelve one. Sorry, sorry. councillor Benson Pope.
Aye.
councillor Elder.
Aye.
councillor Gary.
Aye.
councillor Hall.
Aye.
councillor Hawkins.
Aye.
councillor Lord.
Aye.
councillor O'Malley.
Aye.
councillor Stedman.
Aye.
councillor Vandivers.
Aye.
councillor Wiley.
Yes.
councillor Wilson.
Yes.
your worship.
Aye.
carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Aye.
councillor Staines.
Okay. Carrie, thank you. Now we're on to item seventeen, I think Carrie was coming up to Boston. Do you wish to preface this with a wee part, yeah? Nice to have you there.
Probably, probably just to say that obviously the rates resolution gives effect to the approval of the ten-year plan, obviously the income that's associated with that and obviously allows us to strike the rates on the first of July. It has been through a legal approval process, part of our standard procedures when we prepare this resolution, because it's quite a detailed resolution.
Okay, I'll open it up to questions. councillor Hall, you'll move. Okay, thank you. Any questions, councillors?
You're sitting there.
Oh, you're sitting there, right. Right, questions? There are none? Would you like to move, councillor?
I'll move.
Yep, move councillor Staines, second councillor Elder. Do you wish to speak to this councillor Staines? Any discussion? It's a very complex, obviously, no discussion? I'll put all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No recorded, please.
Carried, thank you. Wish your t-shirt, t-shirt councillor Stedman.
He's sorry.
Sorry? Oh no, it's not enough, it's here. I need, I need everyone here.
Right, on to item eighteen, local Easter Sunday shop trading policy review. Welcome, Simon. Welcome in.
Happy to take questions.
I'll just go straight to questions, right. Questions, councillors on this one? councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, thank you, your worship. I'm assuming the survey that has been done, that is reported here, had the capacity for people to fill that in anonymously?
Yes, correct, yes.
And so following on from that, is there scope under the LGA through a special consultative procedure for people to give submissions anonymously?
Both probably legal questions.
You want to come back to your, I think, just off the cuff, we don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, councillors? councillor Gary.
Thank you, your worship. On page sixty, it talks about the mandatory opening provisions and shop leases may not be interpreted as requiring a shop to trade on Easter Sunday. And I know there was something, I was just flicking back to have a look on the survey, but just remind me and forgive me if I overlook this, but how much confusion do you think there was around that in the malls?
Yeah, we did, we did check with that, particularly Wall Street. And I think it was, it was only certain leases, but I don't think we came across any of those. But we did work with the boss over that particular question and I think that was reasonably straightforward in terms of understanding.
The subsequent question, can you just clarify? If we wanted to pass this and allow Easter trading on Easter Sunday, trading on Easter Sunday, and we wanted to do it subject to major events, is that possible or is that not possible under the Act?
So the Act doesn't allow you to do that? So the Act does say that you can't, you either have a policy which is permissive or not, you can't have a trigger within a policy which says if you have a major event, then the policy kicks in and otherwise it doesn't. It is that sort of all or nothing. And that's particularly highlighted in the Act.
councillor, you'll move. This is the resolutions in the wallpaper. Is there a second of that? councillor Hall. So it's moved councillor Hawkins, second councillor Hall. Do you wish to speak to it councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, briefly, we have, this is a commitment that we made when we adopted the policy for this, it's just been that we would review the policy within ninety days and it turns out we have to do it through the special consultative procedure. So this just sets abotion that process. I think the survey results are pretty interesting actually, particularly given the amount of money that was so generously received into this economy over that weekend that it hasn't triggered a groundswell of support for that becoming the status quo among those who were the recipients of the liberalized trading regime. So I think that's, that is quite interesting. My concern during the debate when we adopted the policy holds in that I have an ongoing difficulty accepting that people who have felt pressured to work against their will will be reluctant to publicly bring themselves forward and put themselves forward to say so in a process where that could further disadvantage them in their place of business. And I think the results that we've got in the survey that has allowed for inaudible feedback has shown that on more, on plenification, it sounds like, people felt like, regardless of the safeguards that the legislation provides them, felt like they were being pressured to work against their will and that is disappointing. But I think for the process to, for the review to be as thorough as possible, we need to ensure that those voices are heard. And so it's a question for how we go about that in terms of the hearings process, but I would implore our staff to come up with a mechanism that does allow that, whether that's allowed to be taken into account anonymously as part of submission by umbrella groups or the unions or however we manage to do it. I think we need to pay particular attention to making sure that is part of the process and I look forward to having this, having the discussion all over again and wish the hearings committee luck, the best of luck as they go through it again. And it might be worth considering also as we go into those hearings, some staff thought around what a decision-making framework might look like, that was something that was missing and isn't always the easiest thing to make up as you go along. So some thought between now and then as to how those, how the competing concerns or views of the community through this process can be weighed up against each other, I think might be helpful for the, for the hearings subcommittee. Good luck.
the speakers. councillor Wilson.
Can I ask a question? If we, if we wish submissions and the hearing to be able to be held in non-public for reasons
If we, if we wish submissions and the hearing to be able to be held in non-public for reasons of privacy as outlined by councillor Hawkins, do we need to indicate that now or can that be added in later? Because it is a matter that I think will affect people's submissions.
The chair, I don't know whether Eleanor could answer that? No, sorry, we'll have to come back to you.
The problem with coming back to us is that that will slow down the process if it needs to be a motion and that's what I'm trying not to have to bring it back to. And so whether, whether we put a motion, that should, whether there needs to be an additional part of that motion, that if the LGA provides for the hearings to be held and submissions process to be held in non-public, then that should be made available for the submitters.
And I suggest that if that's put in, it isn't expressed that way, because the mechanism for maintaining the privacy of some submitters may not be wholly in the non-public, it might be another mechanism. So I suggest that it be phrased in such a way that it just allows for confidentiality. So I suggest that we adjourn for five minutes while that's, we want to get the wording right, so I'll move that we adjourn for five minutes, second councillor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, Carrie. Councillor Wilson, if you could come up and help Lynne with the wording. All right, we'll get underway again. It's not going.
So, so we hit a lot, we, we currently accept anonymous submissions in special consultative procedures, so we will be able to guarantee anonymity through one mechanism or another without requiring, without needing a resolution to that effect.
Okay, so it reverts to the resolution on the order paper. And are there any further speakers to that? There are none, so I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, Carrie. Item nineteen, Waste Futures two thousand and twenty-three. Okay, we've got stranded questions councillors, item nineteen, any questions? Councillor Vandivers.
On page ninety, item seventeen, it says, any extension of the Green Island landfill consent would only be for a short period. Given that in most of the years I've been here, your predecessor, Tony Avery, absolutely was adamant that there would be no possible use of the tip beyond two thousand and twenty-three. It seems to me that as we get closer to two thousand and twenty-three, the possibility of an extension is certainly now real. And here we say it's only going to be for a short period. What kind of short period are you anticipating? And why has there been a change from staff's advice that in the past, there would be no possibility of an extension past two thousand and twenty-three?
So I'm not too sure exactly what was behind that original advice that there would be no extension past two thousand and twenty-three, all I can imagine that that was based on filling rates of usage at the time. The truth of the matter is at the moment, the consent for the Green Island landfill expires in two thousand and twenty-three, however, the consented maximum filling for that space is unlikely to be reached by two thousand and twenty-three based on the filling rate. So we can continue to operate the landfill for a short period of time, depending on the amount of waste that is going to that site, to get to the currently consented maximum space available.
Thank you for that clarification, which brings me to the next point, and that is that given that we have a zero waste to landfill policy that we're trying to achieve, is it conceivable that were we to get very serious about this in the next year or two, that that available space may in fact service for many years to come, given that we are able to adopt some of the technologies councillor Hall seems to be quite conversant with, and actually recycle most of what currently goes to landfill?
The potential does exist, I would caution that that needs to be put against the fact that the landfill is in a very bad ecological position. So we'd need to factor in more than just the space available, et cetera, in that space, it also needs to be taken into account of where the landfill is positioned, et cetera, as well. The local community, et cetera, there's a lot of factors that would need to be taken into account if that was a decision that was going to be made.
From your answer, do I understand that you don't see much chance of us getting anywhere near the zero waste to landfill aim that we have in the next couple of years?
I see a good chance of us getting towards zero waste, I don't see it being able to happen within the next couple of years. My answer was based around, more around the fact that the Ministry for the Environment and the Ataga Regional Council are not particularly keen on the location of the Green Island landfill beside the Kakarau estuary. Beside the estuary down there.
Further questions councillors? Councillor O'Malley.
I have a few of these, just by way of background where we're going with these questions, we know that the Waste Minimisation Plan is being reviewed at the same time, and I'm looking at the structure of that committee and the structure that we're going forward with here, and I'm just trying to seek some clarity around the intentions. On point twenty, you make up the statement that this is a unique opportunity for council to develop its preferred future strategic waste management model. So is this going to be a strategic approach that we're dealing with here in this, or is this an operational plan?
The Waste Futures project is more, in basic terms, it's more the operational side of the strategy that's in the Waste Minimisation Plan, so this is the, this is the operationality and the infrastructure to support the goals of council, and the goals of councillor basically in the WMP.
Just further to that, sorry councillor, before you continue, that decisions and public consultation around Waste Futures will all be decision points that come back to Infrastructure and Networks Committee. So while the Waste Minimisation and Management Plan is what we see as the higher level overarching strategy, and the Waste Futures is the grunty operational work to get there, there'll be many decision points along the way involving public consultation, stakeholder engagement, and those results, and any subsequent decisions that are informed by those results will be from this forum.
Yes, I take it that this report we're getting right now is an opportunity to basically introduce the concepts of where we're going, and so we shouldn't be too worried about the semantics in it right now. But that said, I'm going to ask a couple more questions. And actually it jumps down, then I'll jump based on your answer to point twenty-four and look at the work streams that are going there. And I'm looking at work stream number four, and the wording that the Waste Minimisation Management Plan is aligned with and supports Waste Futures two thousand and twenty-three. Should that in fact be the other way around, that Waste Futures two thousand and twenty-three will actually support the Waste Minimisation Plan? Because I'm just again wanting to make sure that we're getting the semantics right on this and how we're going forward with this. It catches really behind councillor Vandivers's questions about where we might be able to go with this. Let's actually manage to knock out a whole heap of questions at once. So likewise, where in the work streams would the development of any ancillary industries that could be part of the Waste Division or Waste Sorting going to be found? So let's say we divert glass, we're having trouble sending it to Auckland, and we might try to make it melted here. Where in those work streams would be that kind of industry?
Yeah, that would be in the WMP, if the council wanted to have an initiative to support that sort of industry, that would be with the WMP and that more strategic overview that plan. And the development of infrastructure would appear in the Waste Futures project.
And also if you look to work stream five, and we look at the review of curbside collection and what that might mean from a service level point of view, there may be some discussions that develop further upon that, round organics and green waste collection. So it's those kinds of conversations that'll come back to this table.
Okay, thanks. I think your question, as you're answering my questions, you're leaving, I'm going to get rid of a lot of my concerns anyways, but. In fact, I've jumped a lot of questions in that process. The only last thing I'll talk about, ask then about is around the development of the Better Business Plan. How will that be developed in relation to the public consultation? In other words, will the public consultation be an early enough event that will actually help towards the design of the plan, or will the consultation be to whether or not you actually like the plan that comes forward?
So the Better Business Case Process, that this initial Better Business Case Process we're working through is to identify some realistic, work through a robust process, to identify realistic options that we can actually work through, go to public consultation with. When we actually get a preferred option out of that, that's when we go into detailed business case and governance case and financial case, et cetera. So this initial process is to actually just define what realistic options, what's affordable and realistic, so that we can actually go to public consultation, et cetera, with those, to be refined via public consultation. During the process of developing the Better Business Case, there will be stakeholder engagement with Waste Industry, with councillors, with ORC, community groups, rural groups, et cetera, to try and actually make sure that we're on the right track. And that's, once again, where it relates very strongly to the WMP, is that we have to make sure that the two work streams are working in sync side by side, so we're getting the same results.
Excellent. And then just the last question is, when you go to point thirty-one, you say early engagement of the project stakeholders currently underway in contact with potential affected parties, is that really just around Smooth Hill?
It's been with people around Smooth Hill, people around Green Island, but also we've had some initial talks with the likes of ORC, et cetera, as well. So a little bit of talk with the university area as well, so just had some initial discussions so far.
Okay, and then I guess then my last question is back to point twenty-three with regular reports to INSCOM. When, how often will we get those reports in terms of how, you know, how are you progressing and who you are talking to, so we understand whether how the engagement's going?
So in theory, they'll be reporting back at least to the quarterly on that, we're targeting to actually have, hopefully, some options on the table by October, but they'll be reporting back on the progress of the Waste Futures project during the quarterly INSCOM meetings.
So they'll just come as reports to INSCOM, there won't be an opportunity for a dialogue between, let's say, well, presumably every bit of the chairs at that point, if it's just going to the, yeah, chairs, ELT meeting. Is there any opportunity effective, what I'm getting at, is that are we going to receive a series of reports, because this is a fairly restricted environment when it comes to debating the nitty gritty of things? Or are we going to actually have an opportunity for a series, more workshops to make sure we're moving off in the right direction?
Yeah, the intention is because council is a stakeholder in the process, that there will be workshops with council's involvement.
Wonderful, great, thanks very much.
Councillor Wilson.
If you don't indicate that I'm happy to move when the time's right, but the question I have in the, is where government is at and has there been any indication of any work with product stewardship or waste minimisation work since I last asked this question a few months ago? And the mayor may also, or may, may or may not be able to advise us whether the local government, New Zealand's submission of Wellington Cities, of which we supported, about waste minimisation work with government, made it through the first round.
We haven't done it yet.
Okay, thank you.
So regards to the, no, we haven't actually got anything solid from Minister of Health and Environment or central government yet. The original statements are probably made to still stand, that we know that they are looking at the waste levy, that is going to change, the emissions trading scheme is going to change. But there's no, nothing definitive that I can actually give you a good answer on anything as yet.
Councillor Wilson, I need to correct that, there has been some decisions made on the remits to the LGNZAGM, and from my recollection, there were a number associated with waste and recycling, and my recollection is that some of those were conflated, to streamline things a bit, but there was actually quite a lot of interest from various councils in this area, so it's something relevant we'll get through. Councillor Gary.
My question's been answered, it was on product stewardship, thank you.
Councillor Alder.
You mentioned that there could be an extension on the present rubbish dump, and you mentioned that, you know, the use has gone down a bit and there could be a little bit more time. Have you got a rough estimate as to what kind of figure that would be, like how many years' extension?
No, I can't give you a good estimate, in the report that's in front of us, if we were to develop another waste disposal facility such as Smooth Hill, that process would take seven, possibly eight years to work through. The consent for Green Island expires in five, so we'd need another two to three years to get us to another option. Not wanting to presuppose that that's the option we go for. In theory, if we did achieve greater results in waste minimisation, then in theory you would have five to ten years left.
Further questions, or councillor Hawkins? Councillor Lord.
I was just going to ask him, of course, the opportunities to train ship rubbish outside the district, like to Brands, that might be, you wouldn't neglect that possibility?
No, we won't be neglecting that possibility as part of the Waste Futures, it's, shipping waste out of district is, doesn't find favour with Ministry for Environment. However, if it was part of a wider strategy, then yeah, it certainly will be in the mixes.
No further questions, would someone like to move the resolution? Councillor Wilson, second of councillor O'Malley, any do wish to speak to it?
I'm glad to see this work happening, but I think what concerns me is there is a much bigger picture that yet has, hasn't unfolded yet with product stewardship and just not generating waste in the first place. And I think there's a totally different conversation that has to be started at a central government level, and I'm still supportive of the motions going to local government, New Zealand, to encourage government to take a really ambitious role in that count. And that we should all be aiming to be a hero named for zero. It's easily said, but we have a substantial amount of household waste, e-waste, which I'm thrilled to see Carvel's doing so much great work on, minimising that. And recycling and organics are great as well, as being part of that hero. I think the opportunities are, I've had a few emails and updates from Montreuil, from our Earthwell traveller, and I'm really excited to see some of the stuff that's coming out of, out from some of the, from Italy. And I look forward to hearing his contribution to that, but I think we really need to look at a mind shift here, not just to slow down us filling up landfills, but for a whole lot of much broader environmental and economic reasons.
Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you your worship, I'll try not to bore you all too much in the coming days and weeks, but I think this is genuinely a really exciting piece of work. There's a perfect storm of challenge and opportunity, both at the, at the local, in the local context with consents and contracts expiring around landfill and curbside collection, at the national level with reviews underway of how the ETS functions and what that means for our financial liability, what happens with the waste levy, for example, what the impact of a more ambitious carbon reduction target at a national level will have on how we deal with, we deal with waste. And internationally, as has been mentioned, with the decisions recently coming out of China and Vietnam, that they're not going to take the world's rubbish anymore, sorted or otherwise, and quite rightly, as so many countries have taken for so long and made it their problem.
it their problem, and just shipped it out to China or Browns, as the case may be, rather than dealing with the problem that we have ourselves. And while we're not in that situation yet, I think it's a stark reminder that we are vulnerable when we rely on foreign markets for taking our recycled material rather than building resilience into our own waste system here. What I hope this does is, this piece of work does is give us the opportunity to rethink how we deal with our waste system rather than just review what we're currently doing, like where the tip might be or what we pick up at curbside, because there are plenty of opportunities to do things differently as we deal with our waste streams. And, you know, a couple of examples, as councillor Wilson has alluded to, that I've been made aware of, small towns in Finland, for example, who run their entire public transport system on the biofuel they generate from their curbside organic waste collection, and similarly, in a perfectly circular world, the rubbish collection trucks in Montreal that are fuelled by the organic waste that they collect at curbside. The circular economy being the current buzzword, it used to be called waste diversion or resource reuse, it's hard to keep up sometimes, but there are, and we do, we do some of that already, obviously, with methane capture and the investigative work that was going on around using our wastewater network as an energy source, but there are, there is a lot, there is great potential there, but I would also like to strongly endorse the comments that councillor Wilson has made, that we, by investigating them and going too far down that track, you run the risk of investing heavily into fixing the symptoms of our current patterns of behaviour, rather than changing our patterns of consumption and behaviour, which is ideally what you want to do and what the waste hierarchy asks us to do in terms of reducing our impact rather than just trying to deal with the problem. So while I, so I think it's important through this process that the minimisation part of the waste minimisation plan is given, is given due weight, and I look forward to, I look forward to that, and I look forward to working constructively with government and particularly around the product stewardship work, which I think would be of great benefit to what we're doing. We do need greater regulatory instruments to be able to achieve what our collective ambition is around this work. Thanks.
councillor O'Malley.
I want to thank staff for this report, and after the questions, I'm much more comfortable with it. The closure of the Green Island landfill coincides with the development of the, of the updating of the Waste Minimisation and Management Plan, and I think the two coming together gives us a unique opportunity that the city probably hasn't seen for forty or fifty years. And therefore, going forward, we need to be really careful about the steps we make, because the condition, what we do do now will in fact also have ramifications for the next thirty, forty years into the future. So I encourage staff to continue with the positive outputs that have come from the development of WMP. I feel that the interaction has been one that I've been very happy with, and I think that we're getting some good insights as to where we're going, and I hope that we can then work together as we go for a few Waste Futures, that this will also be able to play into each other. The development of the Better Business Case, I really do hope, will be developed in such a way that we get good community input as we go along, so that we can, while we do have to stay inside the ability to deliver, we also have to capture the aspirations of our communities. And in doing so, we will end up developing what I think will be the greatest of all of the systems in the country. And when we talk about things to show off, I know it's not normally your landfill and your transfer stations that you want to go to, but in fact, they are things that are very important. Currently, you know, we're not, I'm not particularly proud of the black bags outside our houses, and I know that that will change, and I'm looking forward to what we will see in the future. And the last point, about towns in Finland and other such things, the speaker that came and spoke to the council and has been doing a tour about similar sized cities in Finland and what they can do, raised some very important points in terms of industries that can come off the edge of this, and that we need to consider this not just as a waste disposal, but in fact in raw materials for industrial development, and that we can hit zero waste as close as possible if we really take this on as an exciting proposition of growth and investment in our city. And remembering too, that the most of the bulk waste that goes into our landfill is not from our houses, but it's from industrial waste, so cement and timber are also big components here. So as we look at this bigger picture, I'm looking forward to the idea that we create, and it may or may not be at Green Island, I think the proximity to the wetlands there, and I stood on top of the landfill with councillor Newham and a few others, and once you stand there, you realise that it really does have to probably finish its life there, and that's why I'm quite encouraged to see that we're looking for a new site. But I hope that that site can find, fulfil us for four or five hundred years, because the rate at which we fill it up at will be so slow, that we won't need to be looking for another one for so long. So I thank you for the report. I look forward to developing the plans, well, you developing the plans, because there's the plan that executes the strategic document that we will be working on together. Thank you very much.
I would just like to pick up on a comment that councillor Hawkins made about the need to look at some of the other challenges here, and I'm specifically thinking about the need for product stewardship schemes, the need, our need to dispose of things like white wear, computer wear, tyres, and a good number of other things can only be achieved, that challenge can only be met at a national level, we can't make up the rules here. So what we desperately need is this effort here, that's absolutely essential, but at the same time, we need to be working with central government to get mechanisms in place to give us the tools to deal with those things in a coherent way, and I look forward to that dual effort. Are there any other speakers? There aren't. councillor Wilson, do you wish to exercise your right of reply? All right, I'll put it all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Thank you, Chris, thank you, Jan. Right, on to the item twenty, statement of intent for the Neen City Holdings and subsidiaries and associate companies. Dave? Malcolm Jim?
Do you wish to introduce this?
So, I might just add one thing again. Far away.
So just further to the paper that was sent out, I'd like to advise that Aurora have advised, they're aiming actually to get a statement of intent as of the third of June signed off, so we should be able to circle that in next week, with the financial forecast that will be included, will only be draft.
Questions, councillor? councillor Van Der Sjoen?
Why in particular were Aurora not able to be part of this statement of intent? What was the delay for Aurora?
It was initially, they had until thirtieth of August, early September, and they were going to use that time to spend more time in the asset management brand, and spend more time on financial forecasts. They're now, they're now believing that thirty June is their cutoff, so that's the date they're working towards.
So they had no obligation to actually have a statement of intent like all the others today?
I'm still researching through the background to that, but we've got recent advice yesterday and the day before, which we're looking into, which suggests that the timeframe is thirty June, not September.
It's a bit of a conflict between the two acts, the electricity act and the local government act, so they were working towards the electricity industry, and they recently got another piece of advice that said, ah, it would be wise to work towards the CCO Local Government Act timeframe, so they're now doing it.
Thank you. On page twenty-seven under objectives, it talks under three A, to achieve the objective of its shareholders, both commercial and non-commercial, should that be to achieve the objectives, plural? This is our page twenty-seven, three A.
I think you've been advised, I don't know if you've caught the email councillor Van Der Sjoen, that when we came out to councillors with the draft statements of intent, we had a period of time under which, under law, we were allowed to make changes, that period of time is now over, it's gone, these have been signed off by the subsidiary companies and been through DCHL, so we don't actually have, you can ask questions, but we don't actually have the ability to make further changes today. That period of time was over, I think, on the first of May, so that was, there was a period where we advised everybody, here are the drafts, you can suggest changes, they have to be made. These things that you're suggesting, and the one in the email, were in draft, they were not made, those suggestions were not made within the, within the window of time, that the act allows the shareholder to request changes, so we're not able to make further changes today, they are signed off, they're being presented to us here.
So the hours that I've spent going through, at least half a dozen different issues here, can't be changed now anyway, we're just going to rubber stamp.
As was told to you when we sent you the draft, that was the time at which you could make changes, and I think you did suggest some at that point in time.
Certainly did.
Making further changes at every iteration is simply not possible, there's a point in time when the act says, it comes to you, you've got a period of, I think it was sixty days, where you needed to make any suggestions for change, we told you that that was the period of time, that time period is now over.
So why are we ticking it off now, and why didn't we tick it off at the last meeting? Why?
Because they hadn't made the changes, and now they've made the changes, and we have, in fact, they've been and presented to you at workshop and talked councillors through the changes they made, as per the requests that were made of them within the statutory timeframe.
Thank you.
Any further questions? councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, you worship. Well, these will be, these will take effect from the first of July, is that correct? But insofar as historical matters may arise, they will, should historical matters arise in the next financial year, will the next financial year's statement of intent apply? As opposed to the time at which any historical grievance may have actually have occurred, if that makes sense?
Can you make up an example?
So for instance, issues that have been flagged by former staff of utility companies, would, in years gone by, or, but if they were brought to light in the next financial year, this would be the framework that would apply, as opposed to whatever it looked like at the time that the event occurred?
I guess the companies always have to operate within the statement of intent, so if something's occurred, they need to operate within the confines of the statement of intent for that financial year. So I guess you would go back to the corresponding statement of intent that covered the time period of particular incident? Is that?
I think, I think what the answer is that it would be unreasonable to expect a company to retrospectively act in a way that complies with something, a statement of intent that wasn't in place at the time.
Yeah, and I generally agree with it, I'm just, I mean, it's specifically, it's around point eighteen, it's on page eleven of the DCHL statement of intent, and it's around communication, so it's not anything in particular, it's just, it's a, it's a statement around a greater degree of cooperation and communication between council and DCHL. So I guess the question is, would that clause be how we would approach dealing with issues, whether they are current issues or historical issues?
That would be my expectation, yes.
Apologies for the roundabout way of getting there, but we got there, thank you.
councillor Van Der Sjoen, she had another question.
Given the statutory timeframe issue, does this also apply to Aurora? Will we get a chance outside the statutory timeframe to deal with the Aurora SOI?
No, the Aurora, the draft Aurora SOI came to you at the same time as all of the others, and in fact, I think the change that did get discussed by everybody was around the legoema issue, making sure that, that those discussions were held, that has come back to council with a presentation about how they were intending on presenting those, and those changes had been made to the statement of intent. So again...
Have we seen those changes?
Yes, they were presented to councillors.
All right, in terms of the statutory timeframe for SOIs, prior to the closure of the statutory timeframe, I asked repeatedly about the directors' term limits for the Denean International Airport limit. I still haven't had an answer, I've raised the issue, I was hoping that we would have in today's paper when it talks about directors being appointed by shareholders, et cetera, under number three.
Two minutes are contained in the constitution, not the SOI, I thought you'd had an answer to that question, but Gemma can tell you now.
Sandy was endeavouring to give me one, but then she took six, so...
So there was an answer emailed as part of the follow-up from the quarterly update on the twenty-ninth of May, confirming that, so the Denean Airport constitution is now being updated, it's on the company's office website, and it has the, the limit on the number of consecutive terms directors are able to serve, as discussed at that quarterly update.
Sorry, was that only consecutive terms, or was that three terms?
And the length of term, it's three years.
Sorry?
And the length of term, yes.
Yes, but you just said consecutive terms now, does this open the door for someone serving a fourth term if they've had a break?
Because in theory, although, that's consistent across all constitutions. That's, it's consistent across all the constitutions, so all constitutions of DCHL group companies.
Denean Airport, that is.
No, we've changed it, so it is now consistent across all constitutions. Please bear in mind that only, and the email did go out, so I think if you go back, you'll find you do have it, that only applies to DCC appointees, the government decided not to have that limit on their appointees, or that's in the same email, that's probably we found that out.
There are just the two appointees that we have. I just wanted to confirm when, given that the change has now made it into the SOI, when in fact that change will be executed, when it will have practical effect.
I'll email that around, it's not a statement of intent issue, but I'll email that around.
Thank you.
Other questions? Would someone like to move then the resolution? councillor Staines, second to councillor Lord, do you wish to speak to this? Any speakers? There aren't, and I'll put it all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Carried. Recorded, please.
Right, on to item twenty-one. Thanks Gemma, thanks Dave. Revocation of bylaws.
Gemma.
Now, do you wish to introduce this, or take it as read?
Thanks, Chris.
Right, questions councillors? The report was pretty self-explanatory. Okay, no question, oh councillor Hall. Oh, move councillor Benson Pope, second to councillor Hall, do you wish to speak to councillor Benson Pope? Any further speakers? There being none, I'll put it all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Item twenty-two, naming of two roads, a new roads off Haggett Alexander Drive. Malcolm Richard? Do you wish to introduce this, or just go further? Questions?
Apologies, councillors, just one correction, attachment B in this report is a map which refers to Glenymre Court, it should read Glenymre Close, that was an early map, but it is Close, that's a preferred suffix for that, that street.
Right. Okay. Are there any questions? councillor Garrett.
Very quick question, and I don't know if I have the pronunciation correct, Ophirro, is that right? Ophirro. Would this be the first time that we have used macros with the Torreau street name?
I would have to check to be absolutely certain, sorry councillor.
It could well be, because we have only... It could well be, because we have only recently changed the policy.
Well, that's a very second of a country. It was great to see, thank you.
Definitely done before, yeah.
Any further questions? Right, it's been moved councillor Wiley, second to councillor Wilson. Councillor Wiley, do you wish to speak to this? Any further speakers? I'll put all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Item 23, Parkinson's survey feedback. You're remaining in place, Richard. Welcome Lee. Straight to questions. Questions councillors on the Parkinson's survey feedback? Councillor Van de Wissel.
In the graph on page 123, where do you experience the issues or see these opportunities? Central Dunedin CBD and central Dunedin, north Dunedin are the standout issues where there are issues rather than opportunities. Given that we have this enormous problem in both of these areas, how do you see the proposed position of the new hospital impacting on this already difficult situation? Councillor Benson Pope. Irrelevancy is...
Councillors, we don't need any cross-talk.
You've asked, what you saw us to answer the question, please let him do so.
Look, at this stage, it's too early in the process councillor to understand what the impacts of that might be. That will depend on design and things that we're not aware of from the hospital as to whether they will provide parking or not on the site. And we haven't gone that far down the process, other than I can say staff are involved in those conversations, both ourselves and the transport agency staff. We are aware of existing problems in and around the hospital and that came through in the survey. So it's certainly something that will be front of mind for us in discussions with the hospital rebuild team.
And yet you have publicly said in the OTT words to the effect that because of the proposed hospital position, you are now having to look at rerouting major arterial transport, perhaps away from the one-way street system, perhaps round the waterfront, compromising potentially the waterfront as opposed to the compromise proposed to the hospital. Could you comment a bit further on what you said in the newspaper, please?
I can't remember explicitly what I said, but I believe the intent of what would have been said is we are exploring all of those opportunities, given the development that we know is coming through the hospital site. And part of that exploring is to understand any compromises that may need to be made on either the state highways or the harbour side or any other route that might be impacted. And in order to inform those decisions, we need to understand exactly what those compromises or opportunities might be.
It might be useful to know though councillor Van de Wissel that the subject of parking does get a lot of airtime, both at the local advisory group, which is working with the hospital and with NZTA as a member, ensuring that we increase the parking supply, there's adequate supply in the areas of town where we know things are tight, particularly around the hospital itself. But with any roadway changes, provision of additional parking is something that does receive a lot of attention as those issues are being explored. There's been a number of suggestions from councillors about if there's going to be hospital parking, can we add extra floors to that that we can purchase for public parking, for example? That's on the table. If there's going to be a change in the routes for the one-way system, does one of the current one-way systems provide for angle parking? That's on the table. So increasing parking provision is very much in the discussions as these things are explored.
Very pleased to hear that it's now in the discussion. Do you accept that for the last 10 years, decreasing parking provision by increasing the number of dotted yellow lines, by increasing cycleways, by increasing all sorts of other issues, has actually had the effect of forcing a lot of our, especially city workers, into parking right up into the green belt and into areas where residents used to be able to park outside their own front gate and now can't?
Certainly parking has changed over the last 10 years, there's no doubt about that. Retrifying cycleways into cities...
When you say changed, the question was, do you accept that it has reduced consistently for 10 years now?
What I'm saying is where people park has changed. So putting in dotted lines, the provision of some on-street parking has certainly reduced, but the number of off-street parking because of demolished heritage buildings has probably increased. So there has been changes in the provision of parking in Dunedin. We know compared to other cities, it's still relatively easy to get a park, but we know that it's frustrating and that's the purpose of doing this parking work. Finding out what's working, what's needed, what's not, where it's needed. This is exactly why the work has been done.
Right, you've just said that there has been some increases in parking as a result of parks being provided in places where buildings have been demolished. My question was, do you accept that the DCC provided parking?
Councillor, when you ask questions, it is not reasonable to keep banging on until you get the answer that you're demanding. The CEO has answered your question, please go on to the next one.
She hasn't.
She has, go on to the next one. Councillor Gary.
Thank you, your worship. And thank you for a very comprehensive report. I wanted to just ask if I notice on page 124, under Dunedin Museum, it talks about crossing the road, busy road, with children being an issue. Did the issue of crossing the road in the vicinity of the hospital for elderly or injured patients, did that arise as a point, as a comment in the feedback at all?
No, not that I'm aware of. The issue that arose in the comments outside the museum was particularly to do with the fact that pay parking had been removed during the cycleway implementation and there were incidences of people crossing the road to feed the machines on the other side of the road. I've been in contact with NZTA and they assure us that those machines will go back as fast as they can.
And my second question was around mobility parking on 128. Did you feel you got a really good insight into the issues for people with mobility issues from the survey?
We certainly got good engagement and further hold of it, so we've got comprehension of that. And that will maybe be something that we continue to flesh out with mobility parking users to ensure we best understand that.
Thank you.
Councillor Wilson.
I'm sorry, but I may have misunderstood. I'm just wanting some assurance, if that's okay, that the reason we dot yellow lines along roads isn't to take away parking. I presume it's for some other reason and what that might be?
The result from the dotted yellow lines... Sorry, thanks. The outcomes that people come up, the reasons are varied, can be safety. So, but no, it is not expressly, we don't target... Remember there is always a process to go through to assess the suitability of the space or not for parking.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, thank you, your worship. In the same way that when we put out things for consultation around dog ownership, we get an overwhelming percentage of feedback from dog owners. Do you have a sense of how many of the respondents to this survey are drivers? Was that something that was considered, is not explicitly asked in the survey design or just whether that's something that you can get a feel for in the responses that you've had?
I think it's fair to say that the majority of responses are from drivers, but we got a number of responses from people who are not drivers as well and use the city in other ways and use the feedback form to give us that feedback.
And I thank them for taking that lateral opportunity to do that. But I guess my question is at what point does the other, because the other question is, what would people, you know, do people have an alternative view as to what that space could be used for other than storing private motor vehicles? So is that a conversation that we're going to, we'll have in the design phase of the central city plan? Is that the intention? Thank you. Can staff confirm just around the central city parking issues that there is still vacancy in the inner-city parking buildings that do exist in the CBD? Just following on from the comment that, you know, the pressure has forced people up into serpentine air. But is there not still vacancy in the inner-city parking buildings? Should people be comfortable with paying for it?
Yes, that's part of the issue. We do know that the parking buildings we have in the centre of town are underutilised during the day, particularly in the middle of the day. So what seems to be happening is that the people are choosing to park further out in free-to-parking spaces rather than choose to pay to parking spaces in the centre of town.
Just to say councillor Benson Pope, the hassle, are we any closer to being able to get access to that information in real time to be able to communicate to people where those vacancies are?
Unfortunately, we're not, other than we are aware of councillor Benson Pope and others desire to have that real time as we enter the city. And it's certainly something as far as the overall parking work will be on the list.
Councillor Benson Pope.
Thank you, councillor Hawkins, for asking half my question. And we all know when we visit other towns in New Zealand, the extensive use of sensors so that people, management know how much parking is available. And as you acknowledge, I have asked over a number of years when we're going to get some real-time information for drivers about what's available and where. And so you've alluded to that, but can you put any timeframe on that?
I can't give a timeframe at this stage, sorry councillor. We're not that far into the project, it's part of the broader parking discussions. We're not treating it as a separate issue, so I can't give a time on it at this stage.
Councillor Van de Wissel.
My question's been answered, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Councillor O'Malley.
Just a question around the use of parking buildings. Do you know what the hourly rate roughly is on the Mooray Place building? My question really relates to, let's say you're a store worker, how many hours a day would you have to work to pay for your parking if you were paying full commercial rate in a building like the Mooray Place building? In other words, is that why do you think that people might be driving up the hill to park and free parking all day? Because parking actually for people on low income might be a serious burden?
I suppose that these are the types of questions that we need to look at through this process is understand what the different drivers are, what the different considerations are for people and the different types of parking available. And this really was our first opportunity to seek some general feedback, just to give us some key things to consider. But there is a lot more work to do and that will involve councillors and the community to drill into the sort of questions you're asking, because we don't have that information at present.
No, I understand that. And this is a great first document actually, and so I just want to touch on one point and see what you think about it. All-day parking, park-and-ride and the alternatives of transport such as public transport. As you're going forward, you must presumably see there's going to be a link to bring, if people are coming from a distance, say such as Mozgill, and we want to get them to do alternatives. Will you be exploring the opportunities for park-and-ride and the contributions that public transport can make to that?
Park-and-ride has been identified, not in this but in other forums as well. So certainly an opportunity to explore. I know it's been raised in the hospital discussions as well. So, you know, that is something that is on the table and will need to be considered. And we know the connection between parking and public transport and the impact that each can have on the other. So certainly will be something for us to consider as well.
And you then obviously said move on to saying then that co-governance between us and the OIC around public transport would be quite important for us to deliver our outcomes here when it comes to parking and congestion in the city?
Oh, look, any forum that will enable us, I guess, to have an input into public transport will assist just to bring the two things together.
Councillor Elde.
Mr Wilson, I'd like to say thank you for putting the survey together and getting it out there. It's great because it gives us information for making decisions on. And that's my next point is, what is the process from here that, you know, as councillors and as the public, we can know what that process is going forward?
Process from here is really, this is the start of a conversation. So we will probably contact, be in contact with the community through the council on a number of occasions over the coming year with ideas or things to implement. And some of the other papers you see before you today provide us with the processes to do that.
Further questions? Councillor Wiley.
Thank you. Thank you. Were there any surprises? Did anything, you know, sort of jump out at you, actually we haven't seen this before? Or this, you know, sort of took you by surprise?
I'll hand over the map to them.
No, not really any surprises. It's good to have reinforced what we thought ourselves as officers. We did find out some useful information from the public, like some of our parking machines were not working in the way they were intending to be working and we've been able to fix that since. So nothing really surprising, no.
And the information from communities like South Dunedin, Green Island, Caversham, about the amount of people that are parking and heading further south, things like that?
I think coming out of this, we will want to have a discussion about the role of our suburban centres and how we manage competing interests in the suburban centres.
Right, it's been moved councillor Wilson, is there a second please? Councillor Elde. Do you wish to speak to this councillor Wilson? Any further speakers? I'll put all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carried. On to item 24, traffic and parking bylaw review. Questions on this one, councillors? Councillor Van de Wissel.
On page 132, background, item four, it says that the bylaw makes general restrictions such as the prohibition of parking on grass verges. Does the DCC or is the DCC able to authorise parking anywhere within the road reserve of any DCC road?
All right, can you, is, can you clarify, repeat that?
Given a DCC road and there is a road reserve, a certain area that is mapped out as belonging to that road, is the DCC able as a right to designate a certain non-road part of that road reserve to park in?
I try and help answer that question. Already in the bylaw, there are certain roads set aside for parking on the footpath, for example. Those roads are specifically mentioned in the bylaw at present. So that is one mechanism by which we can direct people where to park or where not to park.
I'm very aware of those and I'm sure that the people in those particular areas are very grateful for them because there was a difficulty going back some time when that parking was informal and became a problem. But my question really is, given that we essentially own the road reserve, do we have the legal right to create parking within that road reserve? For instance, if there's a grass area to the side of a road and we want to put goby blocks in there so that you can have grass and parking, as the university have actually done in one or two limited areas, do we have that right as a council to do that kind of combined grass, goby blocks, parking in the road reserve?
So our current bylaw allows us to set aside design areas of any road, part of road or piece of land for express items of which parking is one. So we do have the ability to do that within the existing bylaw and that obviously is... to do that within the existing bylaw, and that obviously is an item that can carry through to the review as well.
And we can do that in any road that the DCC owns? I'm thinking particularly like Butts Road for instance, where sometimes it's an extraordinary requirement for parking and often quite a bit of informal parking, which is not perhaps ideal.
Yes.
Good point, okay, thank you very much for that, much obliged.
Right, any further questions? Okay, would someone like to move councillor Wilson, second to councillor O'Malley? Anyone wish to speak to this? No? I'll put all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Thank you Richard. Right, I'll move from the chair that we go into non-public as per the provisions on the water papers, second to councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried.